Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Major Thomas McWilliams is a chaplain with the Salvation Army. We'll have him lead us through the invocation afterwards. I'll ask Councilman Stonecypher if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Also, a good time to thank the Salvation Army for all they do. And with these cold temperatures, I know your staff is really stretched. So, thanks for meeting the need in Oklahoma City.
Thank you so much. Let's pray together. Father, we're so grateful to you. We're grateful for the year 2017 and all that you blessed us with, all that you gave to us and all that you led us through. And we pray, Father, that you would, as we approach this new year and as we go through it, that you would bless all these wonderful men and women who give it themselves for the good of this city, that you would shower them with your favor, that, Father, you would grant them wisdom in everything that they do and courage to do it. We love you for them. Bless this community, bless this city, bless Oklahoma in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our first council meeting of the year, we honor our employees of the year. The Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club helps us do that. Our first one is from the city council office itself, Debbie Martin. Debbie, come on up. Let's show our appreciation to Debbie. Over here, Debbie, where you can see it. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Debbie Martin has been a city employee for 45 years and is the chief of staff in the city council office, helping resolve residents' concerns, briefing council members on emerging issues, and coordinating responses to residents with city departments. Whereas Debbie manages high-level correspondence, mediates conflicts, monitors neighborhoods, builds bridges between residents and city staff, protects sensitive information, coordinates travel arrangements for council members, and organizes and promotes community meetings. Whereas Debbie is passionate about improving the lives of children and others, and she is instrumental to the success of community improvement programs such as Youth Council, Reading Buddies, the Joint Education Task Force between the city council and the Oklahoma City Public Schools, and the Family Justice Center. Whereas Debbie established the First Tea Program in 2002 at the request of former Ward Seven councilwoman Willa Johnson, which over the years has evolved to not only teach golf fundamentals to children, but also incorporate nine core values: honesty, integrity, sportsmanship, respect, confidence, responsibility, perseverance, courtesy, and judgment. Whereas Debbie's ability to recall city events and elected officials over the decades makes her a walking historian and an indispensable member of the city manager's office, and she approaches work with the same enthusiasm she had on her first day on the job. Whereas serving residents and improving Oklahoma City neighborhoods are Debbie Martin's top priorities, as she keeps a running list of residents' concerns and construction projects in each ward and communicates them to council members so they are always informed, treating all residents with respect and dignity, making lifelong friends in every ward throughout the city. Whereas this council desires to recognize Debbie Martin for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Debbie Martin, 2017 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Year.
Motion. All right. Debbie, let's see if we can hear that. It's least enough. Makes zero. Congratulations. Now, we enjoy. 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 Congratulations.[433.14]
It passed the Planning Commission on November 9th, 2017, and I'm aware of no protest. So I'd move the item.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Comments or questions on 9A2? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 8. The address is 13002 North Penn. Mark?
Yes, again, this is an ordinance on final hearing for an ABC2 application. Came before the Planning Commission on November 9th. It was approved. I'm aware of no protest. So I'd move to pass it.
Second.
All right, any comments or questions on this item from anyone in the audience? Sir, would you like to speak? Or it looks like you're going to get what you want.
I would. I'm down in Ward, Derry Berry Law Firm. I represent the user of the site. That's Torchy's Tacos. We had talked with Councilman Stonecypher about requesting an emergency on this one because when Torchy's, which is a national chain, came to town, they were informed that that development area had an ABC overlay already. And in fact, it didn't. So when they applied for all their liquor licensing, they found that they were certainly behind the curve on that. And they're up, they're ready to go. Able is done. And so they're requesting that. Obviously, their thought is the sooner they're selling and operating, the more tax revenue that comes into the city. So that's their request for that.
Okay, so you're here to talk about the emergency?
Yes.
All right, well, let's vote on the ordinance first. 9A3, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Now, is there a motion or any questions from anyone on the emergency?
A couple of years ago, Jim, didn't we look at the emergency provisions and kind of agree as a council at that time that unless public safety was involved, or public health was involved, that we were getting a little bit out of whack on giving too many emergencies?
There was that.
There was that discussion, yes. But based on that, I'm going to hand a vote no on the emergency.
All right. Wiley, can you give any advice on the definition of an emergency? Can you lead the council?
I don't know if I can give a definition, but it's really the council's discretion of whether or not this situation, in your opinion, should be approved earlier than the 30 days.
Okay. All right.
Council discretion.
Is there a motion?
I would say is that I think the applicant about that I told them past their discussions about a policy decision on emergency applications such as this. And I think you were going to talk to Mr. Jordan's office. Do you have any conversations with any Jordan?
Well, due to the holidays, no one was responding, to be frank. Yeah.
All right, we will need an emotion on the emergency if we're going to vote on it. But it's not listed on here as the emergency. Is that a factor, Francis?
Yes, it is. It's under the heading on A.
Oh, I see. I see.
They all contain.
They all have the emergency.
It's your option.
Okay.
Just to benefit Commerce and Ward 8, I'd move for the emergency. I know the council's policy on that.
All right, is there a second? All right, cast your vote on the emergency. And it passes 6-2.
No, it has to have seven votes, seven affirmed.
It failed 6-2. Yeah. Yeah. All right, item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward 7. The address is 1921, 1925, and 1929 Northeast 25th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would become a new R4 general residential district if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. I see the applicant is present. I had the opportunity to visit the site last month or so, and I definitely like the improvements that are being made to this particular property. This zoning case is basically to bring it into compliance, and I see the applicant is present. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak? All right, Mr. Tony Coleman?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. As stated, this was a department, it's a 12-unit department complex that I acquired in latter September and discovered after acquiring it that it was non-compliant. So the necessary steps have been taken just to bring it into compliance.
All right, with that said, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
Second.
All right, anyone here hoping to speak on item 9A4? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you. Have a good morning.
Item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 312 Northwest 69th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and if approved, it would become I2 moderate industrial. Is there anyone here representing this project? All right, has anyone heard from Councilman Shadid on his wishes on this project? Without that, I would assume that we should move it forward. Is there a motion?
No.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 2501 Northeast 14th Street. It's currently R1 single-family, and it would become R2 medium-low-density residential if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak? No one has signed up to speak. The Planning Commission did approve this. With that said, I move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on 9A6? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A7 is a zoning case in Ward 3. The address is 8801 Southwest 59th Street. It's currently in a planned unit development, and it would be in a new PUD if approved. Larry?
Your Honor, is the applicant present? Kendall, if you come forward. This was brought before the Planning Commission and was approved unanimously. It's an interesting development, and because of that, I'd just like Kendall to speak to what it's going to be and some of the nuances that it'll have as a senior center.
For the record, Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll. And in 2013, you all approved a PUD for this site. It's 17 acres. It had two tracks originally, one for a senior gated residential development. It has to be 55 and older. Track 2 was, at the time, was a commercial retail track. The purpose of this PUD is simply to eliminate the commercial retail track and allow for the senior development to expand into what was the commercial retail track. But as far as the development goes, it is, it's senior, so that it's 55 and older. It's a gated community. It has an architectural standard and some other, it's got a walking trail and common area and tree preserve and some things like that. But it's basically a gated residential senior development.
And we have a, normally, right now, we're on a kit to have sidewalks installed in neighborhoods, but this is not going to have a sidewalk. It's got another.
It's got a little trail system in it.
Which will take that place.
So we've got a centralized common area with some trails, and so it's a little different setup in regards to that. But again, it's gated, it's all private streets, and it's really been a success. We feel like it's a good market and a demand out there. That's the reason that we're taking away the commercial to allow the residential to expand into it.
And then it also has some wording in there about trees.
There is a tree preservation area on the east side that it's, and basically what we're doing, it's the same design criteria as the original approved PUD. It simply just eliminates the commercial track and allows the residential to expand into it.
Thank you, sir. Unless the council has any additional questions, I move for approval.
Second.
All right, we're voting on item 9A7. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 9A8 is a zoning case in Ward 4 at 3801 South Post Road. It's currently a planned unit development. It would become a new PUD if approved. Todd?
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak in protest at this?
No.
This is going to be a fantastic development out here in Ward 4. It's approved unanimously by the Planning Commission, so I would move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item? We're voting on item 9A8. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 9A9 is a zoning case in Ward 7. The address is 5936 Broadway Extension. It's currently C3 community district, and it would become a new SPUD if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, seeing that one has signed up to speak, I do see the applicant is present. The Planning Commission did approve this item, so with that said, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone here hoping to speak against this item on 9A9? All right, cast your votes. It passes by a count of 6 to 1. John's vote's not recorded. Is that purposely?
I'm sorry.
Okay. It is 7 to 1. It passes. All right, we're now on to 9B. This would close an easement in Ward 7. This is in the Rosekneath Heights addition. John, you okay with this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Commission did approve this. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak? No one signed up to speak. I move for approval.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9B. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9C is our annual review and movement on the Adventure District bid. We'll have a couple of votes on this. We'll start with the public hearing. Is there anyone here hoping to speak in the public hearing aspect of the Adventure District Business Improvement District? All right, how about a motion then on item 9C2 to move the item, to adopt the resolution?
I move for approval, but as I move for approval, I do want to point out, we do have members from the Adventure District, and I do see several wards, several residents in, business owners here this morning. So I do want to recognize Tiffany, who is overseeing this business improvement district. And also, we have the zoo, the Chickasaw Nation, the Remington Park president, as well as the owner of the Conoco Gas Station on 63rd and Kelly. With that said, I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9C2. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then item 9D is the actual ordinance on the Adventure Business, Adventure District, Business Improvement District. Do we have a second? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And the clerk says we have a council person who would like to review item A3, and this was the emergency vote on the Ward 8 zoning issue.
Thank you, Mayor. I did flip my switch incorrectly on that vote, and I'd like to make a motion and reconsider the emergency on that vote, please.
All right, we need to vote on the motion to reconsider. Is that right, Francis? All right, cast your votes. Okay, we will reconsider that option, and now the council is voting on the emergency on item 9A3. Is there a motion?
I have the item second.
All right, and it will take seven votes to pass, and it passes 7 to 1. All right, we're on to item 9E. This is our regular review of our sewage disposal.
It's industrial, our industrial waste regulations. It's required by EPA that we review these every five years.
All right, is, is anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? All right, is there a motion on 9E?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9F is a series of items that come to us from the Traffic Commission. The first is item 9F1. It's in Ward 6. Has to do with some two-hour parking. Meg?
Yeah, Mayor, there are a long series of these. I think there are 12 of them.
Yeah.
So in and around.
It looks like they're all in Ward 6.
All in Ward 6. So they all involve a street skate project that was part of a 2007 bond issue in and around class and in the OCU Law School. If we can move through them fairly quickly, I would move approval for this one.
Looks like the first 10 are in Ward 6. The last two were in Ward 7. So we'll vote on item 9F1 first. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. 9F2?
Move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 9F3?
Move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 9F4?
Move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 9F5?
Move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 9F6?
Move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 9F7?
Move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9F8?
Move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9F9?
Move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9F10?
Move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9F11 is in Ward 7. John? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 9F12 is also in Ward 7. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9G is an amendment to the comp plan.
And Chris Varga is here to give us a brief overview of this item.
Good morning. Chris Varga from the Planning Department. Today's item before you is a proposed amendment to the city's consolidated plan with HUD, and specifically, it's to revise some of the CDBG budgets. The purpose of this is each May HUD does a review of all their grantees' timeliness of expenditures, and they have a ratio, they look at your line of credit, and they do not want what's in the line of credit to exceed 1.5 times your annual CDBG allocation. Last May, we did exceed our annual allocation, and I would point out that this is actually funds spent, not funds committed on projects or under agreements or contracts or POs. It's actual funds spent. So we did exceed that. As a result, HUD asked that we relook at our budgets, relook at our projects, figure out how we're going to spend more timely, with specific attention to revolving loan funds. So we have the revolving loan fund for the small business, commercial district revolving loan fund that was established almost two years ago. To date, we've only made one loan for $35,000, and no funds have been drawn from the fund yet. So that was a $750,000 loan fund. We do have a couple of other applicants in with pending requests, so hopefully, we will make some more loans out of that. But in the interim, we're proposing to move some money out of the loan fund, $450,000 out into other projects that we hope will spend more quickly. And we want to move $250,000 to SNI programs and another $200,000 to our own internal housing rehab programs. The action plan for next year, we'll be starting up next month, the planning and the public meetings for that, so there'll be an opportunity to put more money into that revolving loan fund in June if we so decide that that's an appropriate thing to do. So with that, are there any questions?
Move our second.
All right, we're voting on item 9G. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Item 9H would pay some legal expenses. Is there a motion?
There is.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9I, understand we do not need executive session? Is there a second? All right, cast your votes on 9I. Passed unanimously. Item 9J, understand we do not need executive session? Is there a motion?
I have the item second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9K is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under either of the items for claims recommended for denial, item 9K? All right, is there a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 10A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of these items? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 11 is items from council. James, you have anything today? All right, Larry?
Hey, Your Honor. Jim, in Saturday's paper, there was an article about the maintenance work that's going to be needed on I-40, the downtown area.
I saw that.
Okay. And do we have any input into that? Have we looked at it to try to mitigate the implications of that to the people that use I-40? Because I understand it's going to go for about a month.
Let's see if Eric can come in and see whether or not Eric's been briefed on this or not. It's a state project, but I don't know if he's been brought to speed on it or not.
Thank you.
They're a little bit delayed back in the back room. A little delayed.
There he is.
And there he is. Eric, what do you know about the maintenance that ODOT is doing on I-40?
So in the last several weeks, maybe even the last month, ODOT has appraised the city of, appraised the city of several projects that they're doing along I-44, I-40. Some of them have to do with bridges, some of them have to do with pavement repairs. So there is some level of coordination with the City of Oklahoma City that's underway, but what we're finding is that there's a lot of work that ODOT needs to do very quickly, which is what is their plan, is to basically attack the needed repairs to get them done in the manner which they've basically planned some of the closures of Robinson on and off ramps and some of the Gaylord ramp closures as well. I don't know that there's a better option for us at this time, but it is something we could definitely open up the conversation again if necessary. I mentioned I-44. There are some outstanding work items along Interstate 44 that ODOT is also planning, so you may hear about those in the media soon. When I say soon, in the next several months, there's a lot of bridge work. So at the Bajer Bridge crossings, where we've seen on North Interstate 44 at, say, like 10th and 36th and some of the others, they're also going to be working their way to the south, taking care of some bridge work here in the near future. Again, just a part of general interstate maintenance.
All right, thanks, Eric. All right, Todd? All right. David?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Meg?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate the Arts Council for opening night. It was really cold. There weren't, there were lots of people in cars, but the ball drop went flawlessly. The fireworks were fabulous. And it's such an effort that they spend all year planning. We could hear the entertainment as we left the Thunder Game. They really do such a great job for all of our city, and I really want to commend all of the volunteers and.
Rightfully so, and the great fireworks show as well. John? All right. All right. City Manager reports.
Craig Freeman is here to update us on the council priority of maintaining strong financial management.
Thank you, Jim. So we have presentations that come before the council periodically and look at the different priorities of the council, and this time, we're looking at, in this meeting, we're looking at the maintaining strong financial management. There are several indicators that we have chosen to use that are, that give an indication of the city's financial health, and one of those is maintaining our AAA bond rating. Another one is the percentage of the general fund that we maintain in unbudgeted reserve. And then the final one is the percentage of the general fund budget that we get from sales tax. The AAA bond rating is one that we've used for some time, that we've looked at, and our bond rating has an effect for us, you can go ahead and go to the next slide there, Jacob. It's indication of strong financial health for us overall, but it gives a benefit to us of having lower borrowing costs, and it allows us to be able to support other bond issues, just like we did recently on the TIF II bond issue, to provide the city support because they have that higher bond rating. Really, when we look at this, the rating agencies take a long-term view of our financial position, and so when we get feedback from the rating agencies, it helps us to look at different decisions that we can make to ensure the decisions we're making today will have a positive impact on us into the future. And so that bond rating is important to us. One of the factors that we look at with bond rating is the net assessed value as a percentage of the overall debt that we have. And you can see that it stays fairly constant. In the last several years, it's gone up slightly. That percentage has gone up slightly, primarily because of lower borrowing costs allowed us to issue more bonds. The fact that we have that commitment to the voters, that we'll keep an average of about 16 mils is our tax rate, helps us to stay at a good rate and a good level on our overall general obligation bond debt. Also, maintaining our bond rating, in maintaining our bond rating, the pension system funding status is important. This looks at the city's employee retirement system. It's at 105%. We also, the rating agencies also will take a look at the state, the state systems, that are the fire system and the police system. Police system's about 100% funded right now. Fires at about 65%, so that has a negative effect on us. They'll also look at our other post-employment benefits. We talked about that a couple of weeks ago with the retiree health insurance. We're only about 9% funded in that, and so that's one that has a negative effect as well. Having a strong rating on this system helps to balance that out for us as a whole, and overall, we have a good rating on that long-term liability. Looking, this is just a couple of comments that we got. Can you go back one, Jase? There you go. Jacob? This one also is our, I'm sorry, go forward. Yeah. So, yeah, you were right. You were right, I was wrong. The AAA bond rating, these are a couple of statements that we have in our rating reports that we got from Moody's and Standard and Poor's, that they're really concerned about reserves and maintaining strong reserves and feel good about where we are. Also, with Standard and Poor's, they talk about the financial practices of the city being strong and embedded and likely to be sustainable, and that's that reflection of the council's leadership, the leadership that we have throughout the city, and the way that we, the culture that we have for conservative financial management, and it's something that we have to continue to focus on into the future. We do still, we did, we recently had a surveillance of the city's bond ratings by both Standard and Poor's and Moody's as they were looking at the TIF II bonds. And in that surveillance, they came back, and Moody's, both of them kept us at a AAA, but Moody's did look at the negative outlook and kept that in place right now. Their concern on the negative outlook has just been the impact that the economic challenges that we've just recently gone through have had on our budget, and the fact that we've had to draw down some reserves, and that maintaining our reserves and not drawing down further on our reserves is going to be very important to us. They noted that if we had continued draws and had continued reliance upon using reserves for operations, that that would be something that would have a negative pressure on our bond rating, and we could see a downgrade. So it's something that we've really got to stay on top of, make sure we're keeping our expenses in line with our revenues, and I think the way that we built the budget that we're in right now, that we're in a good position to do that. This one, this slide looks at the general fund, and it uses the policy that we have, the general fund fund balance, the unbudgeted reserves, and the policy that we've had that's set by council is 8 to 15%. You can see that over the past several years, we've stayed above that range. Right now, we're at about 15.9%. A part of being able in the last couple of years to stay within that range, we have drawn down fund balance some, and I'll show you on the next slide here. We have drawn down fund balance some, but we've been able, because of the lower budget, it kept us still at that higher level. So you can see from 15 to 16 was really, we had a significant draw on fund balance. On a budgetary basis, we actually added a fund balance slightly in '17. We talked about this last week, or a couple of weeks ago, on the GAAP basis or accrual basis, we did draw a little bit on fund balance, but it was primarily because of the recognizing the market loss of some of our investments. Last one we'll look at is the percent of general fund budget from sales tax, and it's one that's really, we want to keep an eye on, one to make sure that we're keeping our other revenues, our other fees in line with the cost of services, and that we're not becoming too reliant on sales tax. And you see that it stays fairly constant, around 53% is where it's been. We did a projection into FY '19, and it's just a projection right now, but because of the fact of the increase, the extra quarter cent that we'll have is going to really increase the percentage of our general fund budget that comes from sales tax. And the reason it's something we want to monitor, and the rating agencies pay attention to that, is sales tax is so much more volatile than other revenue sources that as the economy changes, the sales tax changes fairly rapidly, so it's something we've got to monitor very closely. It's why we come forward to the council with sales tax reports on a monthly basis, so that we're all, we're communicating with you and keeping an eye on that. But that will tick up just a little bit as we go into the next budgets coming forward, and should move us somewhere around 55 to 56% of the budget. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, good work. All right. Good work. Comments or questions from the council?
Craig, how long has it been since we've had a AAA rating? Can you recall the last time we would have had a change in our bond rating?
Yeah, I don't, eight or nine. I know we got Standard and Poor's changed first, and then Moody's was a couple of years later.
Great. Congratulations.
Craig, can I ask you this? Do you happen to know when Moody's either made the determination of their negative outlook or when that information was released?
It was, I believe it was two years ago when we first got the negative outlook, and they maintained that last year as the challenges continued. As we looked at it this year, and we will have another review as we get ready to do our general obligation bonds in the spring, we talked with them about that, asked them to take a hard look at that, because we were able to go through our budget and get our expenditures in line with our revenues. But they looked at it, and as they did, they said they want to see a little bit more history that, you know, we're back and stabilized, and that we don't see another impact on our sales tax. So that's why they've kept that in place.
So that might be modified later this spring or early summer?
It's a possibility that it could. I would say that probably they're going to want to see us get through another fiscal year. That I, I'm not expecting the change. It could happen, but I'm not expecting the change that soon, because I think they want to see a little bit more history and see that we really do have our budgets in line and that we aren't going to draw down on fund balance.
So it might be later next fall?
Yes, sir.
Fall of '18?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Craig?
Thank you.
Do you want to talk about impact fees?
Just want to let you know that we, this is the first report we put in about the receipts we've received to date on the impact fees. Little slower than the amount of money that we projected with the impact fees, but I think the developers were probably, there was a period before they went into effect, and I think they, they put some of those projects into place before the impact fees came into place. So it's really too early to tell exactly what the revenues are going to be on it, but it was years and years coming up with this process, so I think it's going to be beneficial to us as we go forward, but we'll continue to monitor and bring forth periodic reports to the council.
Do those fees go into the general fund, or where are they kept?
No, they're not in the general fund. They're in a reserve, dedicated escrow account for that purpose.
Have we started spending those funds yet?
We haven't yet. We've done some studies. Craig, did we do, did we fund a traffic study?
We haven't funded traffic studies yet. That'll probably be the first thing that happens, and we actually keep it in individual funds by those individual districts that are outlined in those benefit areas, so that we're making sure that what's paid to that benefit area is used in that benefit area. One of the challenges with that is it's going to take more time to add up enough money to really be able to use on a project. But as Jim was saying, one of the first things we're looking to do will be to do some of the traffic studies in each one of those districts.
Thank you.
And what's the mechanism for deciding on the projects?
Based upon needs out in the field, will we make recommendations? It'll be the council decision to go forward.
Jim, could you comment as far as maybe the revenues not as, as much as was expected, but if we go back to when we were voting on it, and I'm sorry, I forgot, was it a year ago or?
Yes, a year and a half, maybe.
Yeah, and so I suspect that at least some part of that slow growth has been due to the, just the general economy, and developers are somewhat cautious at this point in time, especially residential development.
I think that's true, but I think it's also true that we put a, we put a later effective date, and that was something that the developers had asked us to do, and I think that a number of them had projects in the pipeline, and they wanted to make sure those projects got going before the impact fees kicked in.
Yeah, no, I agree. My only comment is I'm fairly optimistic, again, going back to the oil and gas industry, as to what our economy here in Oklahoma City will be like for the calendar year '18 and '19. I think the worst is behind us, and it'll be a much improved year compared to '17. But, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? All right. Jim, thank you. Any citizens to be heard? No executive session today, so that's it. We're adjourned.